Okay, excellent. And the time is now 7:34 and I would like to call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Kaitlyn, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty. Wait.
We're not hearing you, Carissa.
Sorry, you say hear me. Still can't hear you. I can, I can, I'll circle back to trustee Doherty. Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton.
Here.
President Graber.
Here.
And trustee Doherty? No. Can we, can we take visual?
Can she respond by sticking her thumb in the air or something?
There it was.
We, we got you for a half a second there, Carissa. Maybe just turn your mic volume up a little?
Here?
Yes, now I hear you.
We heard you.
All good. All right.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Where's that?
Thank you, Kaitlyn. We're now on to agenda item number three. I'd like to welcome any visitors to our meeting and we appreciate your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, the approval of last month's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? And I can't see faces, so if Julie, if you could maybe let me know if anyone is nodding or shaking their head.
Everyone appears to be satisfied.
President Graber, I will move to approve last month's minutes.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
Absolutely. So we are, of course, one quarter of the way through the year as of this financial statements. As you can see from page eight, if you're following along at home on the, on our board packet, our revenues do not reflect any property taxes yet for this year. That is typical of us. For this time of year, those generally have the first payment posted sometime in May. As you know, the Village of Downers Grove covers any, any operating expenditures that we need during the time period between the beginning of our fiscal year and the beginning of seeing those property tax monies come in by intergo, as you remember, we did an intergovernmental agreement with them back in 2017. I do want to bring your attention to one thing that will be showing up on the April revenue report, and that is the FEMA grant that we received in the amount of $20,499.46. This is a reimbursement for PPE and other expenses incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is an unusual federal grant because it is reimbursable after, after the fact. But we were very, very pleased to get it. That was through the hard work of our assistant director, Jen Rieske, who was absolutely tenacious in making sure that we secured some reimbursement for those expenditures made. And there will be, there is the possibility for a second round of reimbursement for expenses incurred through April of this year. So Jen will be putting those invoices in and hopefully we will receive a second payment. So we're very excited about that. And then in the expenses, you will see that we are at 21.2% 21.2% expended out of that first 25% of the year. As we have discussed previously, those couple of lines that are a little bit out of whack are on page 10, the maintenance supplies, which, I'm sorry, yes, on page 10, maintenance supplies, which is slightly out of whack. That's due to PPE, as you know, and then we'll have this reimbursement coming in for that line as well. And then data processing services, that is due to the quarterly billing process cycle for our SWAN catalog. So that does look like it extends sooner than it, than our fiscal year actually progresses. And then on the insurance, of course, our annual premiums, so that line does show an 80% expended, but that was an annual premium right at the beginning of the year. And then our capital equipment expenditures, that was the server upgrade that we had to do, the server replacement due to a server failure. So we have, as also previously discussed, within the invoice edit list, I'll just draw your attention to the RGW consulting invoice on page 16, that does include the newly signed additional scope of work that is for three additional staff trainings. That includes recording and playback of those trainings for staff who are unable to attend live. And then also six support meetings for our BIPOC staff support group for the consultant to meet with them on topics of their choice. So I just wanted to point those out, and if you have any other questions, I am happy to answer them.
Julie, is there anything kind of in the pipeline that, because it looks to me like we're kind of on track with, basically on track with where we should be as far as expenditures. And then we'll see what happens on the revenue side. Hopefully it comes in kind of as expected or maybe a little more. But is there anything kind of in the pipeline that may kind of alter things? You know, primarily I'm thinking about on the expense side.
Not at this time. Everything that we are, are working on is currently within the budgeted lines that we already have. So fingers crossed, knock wood, with the, the roofing project that we have, although we had a, there is an additional expense due to the window issue that I had sent out some information about earlier in the month. We did find that there was some, some wet ceiling and caulking of windows that was not originally within the scope of work for the roof replacement project that will need to be done. It's about $24,000 worth of work. However, as you recall, the budget for this project came in $250,000 under the original budget, the original budgeted amount. And so even with that significant addition, we do still anticipate coming in well under budget on this project.
And the recent roof issues and water issues on the second floor, that will eventually be covered by insurance? Or will there be out-of-pocket expenses for the library?
That should be covered by insurance. Specifically, it should be covered by the roofing company's insurance. But we have already made a claim with the library's insurance. We have an adjuster who is scheduled to be on site first thing tomorrow morning. So we are looking forward to that. And then we also would anticipate being reimbursed for the materials lost. Thankfully, it turned out that only about 200 items were damaged in this, in this unfortunate roof leak. And, and again, it was a drain flange that was not tightened down completely when they began the power washing of that section. And they were, they were power washing today before the rain fell and they were trying to get off-site quickly, before the rain fell this afternoon, and it just turned into quite the disaster. But as I said, we've had ServiceMaster, disaster services have been on site. They have, we have fans and a dehumidifier, things are covered in plastic sheeting. And as long as everything is dried out by tomorrow, they will do the cleaning and carpet cleaning. And we may be moved back in and reopened by the weekend, we hope.
Great, thanks for the update.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you to all the staff for the inconvenience, shall we say. And we thank them for springing into action and protecting most of the collection. So we could have, it could have been much worse. And what has been lost is all insured, so we should be in good shape.
All right, thank you, Julie.
Yeah, and thankfully when those ceiling tiles came down, there was no one in the area.
Thank goodness.
Thank you very much, Julie. Can everyone hear me okay? I switched over to a different, okay, sounds good. Does anyone have any other questions or comments on the financial matters?
I have none.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment on agenda items?
Yes, if, if I may.
You may. Please state your name and just, there's a five-minute limit, just so you, so that you're aware.
Thank you. My name is Richard E. Barker Jr. I'm a resident of Downers Grove. I'd like to first thank you for giving me a little bit of time of your time, it's valuable, I know that. And thank you for your service to the library, that sincere. I have, I'm hoping to get a little bit of guidance in terms of your anti-racism statements of late. First, want to be very, very clear, my support of all anti-racism, of all people, of all stripes. I don't know exactly, I wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm addressing people the right way. Ms. Milovic, I don't know if you, how you want to be addressed. So if you would tell me the best way to maybe address you, I don't want to be so informal or.
Ms. Milovic is fine, thank you.
Okay, so we spoke a little bit earlier about some of, again, I would just like some guidance as to where, so clearly, I just want to be very, very clear about my support for anti-racism in any way, shape, or form. I've been around a long time. I marched against anti-racism in Chicago in the late 60s and 70s. And here in Downers Grove for, in our recent march. So very committed to that. But I would like to get some guidance as to where the library derives authority to put out public statements on social, political, or legislative issues, matters. Is there a written document, from, from where does the board derive that authority?
Julie, do you, do you wish to respond or? Okay.
Mr. Barker and I have had this conversation on several occasions. He's already heard from me. The, the board has a, is acting under its bylaws and under the statutes, chapter 75 of the Illinois compiled statutes that governs library law. And they are acting as they see fit as an independent governing body. They can make statements, so.
Go ahead, please. Somebody else wanted to speak. I was hoping that you guys could direct me. You said chapter 75 of the library statutes? Ms. Milovic?
Sorry, I'm in trouble clicking my.
That's all right.
The Illinois compiled statutes, chapter 75, is the public library laws in total.
Okay, and.
And in, in the introduction, and I don't have the citation with me at the moment, but one of the things that the board can do is to actively communicate with the community. And.
Yeah, the bylaws, the, excuse me for interrupting it. The bylaws, as I read them, does have a statement, a broad statement to that effect. But it certainly seems linked to the idea of the service of the library, what, you know, library matters. You know, it seems to me a broad license to take a position on something for an unelected body, for a non-elected body, of which I have no redress or rebuttal. This is a, this is a fairly powerful voice you have and a very influential one. And in which case, in this particular, the anti-racist statement, the anti-Asian racist statement, there are many mischaracterizations and misstatement of fact, actually. And I, so I, I was, according, like I said, according to the bylaws, it seemed that the language, although not explicit, implied that it should be something about library business. So again, I have no problem with anybody having a voice and invoicing their own opinion on any of these matters. I would never cancel, culture anybody, contrary even to my own opinions. I'm mostly concerned with the governmental issue of a non-elected body having authority to, to issue public statements. And again, this one in particular wasn't researched, wasn't cited, there were facts not put into, you know, and I mean, if it's, again, if it's an obed of some kind, then there should be ability to rebut, you know. There's no liability here. Where there's liability, there should be some form of governmental limitation. So that's my major concern. If I don't find that, the other thing was so in the, you're saying that's either in the bylaws. I would appreciate if someone could take point on this for me and maybe help me, since you're a library, help me research the actual language. Instead of just pointing me in the direction, could somebody give me a fine point on this language that I could look at and, and, and address?
The, yeah, I, I'll, and I think we're just about out of, we're at the five-minute limit. But if you do, I will point you directly to the citation, which is 75 ILCS 5/4-7.
Okay, could you just say that one more time? Because you kind of got glitched a little bit there?
That's 75 ILCS.
Yeah. Uh huh.
That is, and Julie, Director Milovic specifically references, as we have the power to adopt bylaws. And in our bylaws, in section one of article two, says that we have the ability to communicate actively with local government and the general public.
Yeah, and, and just before that, though, there's language talking about how it can be confined to legislative issues that are, that concern the library and library service. It seems to me that those ideas are connected. I don't have that in front of me right now, and it really wasn't a debate I wanted to get into. I really just wanted to get this particular information and not take more of your time. One quick question you can just answer, and that is who, who actually regulates this? Does the city council have regulatory power over this board?
No.
No.
We, we, well, I think we're out of time on the, on the comment section. This is, so if you'd like to come back next month and we'll have another five-minute session, that would be, that would be great. And thank you very much for your interest in the library. We really appreciate you being here. And, all right, you're welcome. Okay.
And if you would like, I'm sorry. Jonathan, if you'd like me to just, oh, he's already got, okay. I was just going to take two seconds to, to say that this board is appointed by the village council and the mayor and can be removed by the village, village council and the mayor, and that's the totality of their oversight.
Right. Absolutely. Okay, we're now on to agenda, is there any other, I'm not sure who the other call, I may be one of the people calling in. But is there any additional public comment on agenda items?
Hi, President Graber. We did receive a comment via our online submission form. However, it doesn't pertain to the agenda, but to other library business. So I just want you to know that.
Yeah, well, okay, we'll deal with that in the next agenda item. Is there, but there was no other public comment on agenda items?
No.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to agenda item number seven, which is public comment on other library business. So Jen, I believe you have a submission. Not you, but you have, reading a submission.
Correct. I have a submission from Mr. Brian Sewell. And I'm going to read his submission verbatim for you. When did the DGPL become an advocate for BLM, a Marxist organization, and other woke racial equity plays? The latest April 16th message from, from Ms. Milovic makes reference to systemic racism and asserts the black community's pain, fear, and anger is real. On what basis does she speak for these communities? She also apparently an expert on evaluating policing techniques and feels here, position is an appropriate venue to comment. These are opinions, not facts, and feels she is sending a message that is divisive to our community. The library receives its funding from our taxes and this new social agenda is unwelcome and divisive. What will be next, Ms. Milovic, defending the DGPD? We await your input.
Okay, any additional public comment on other library business?
No other.
Okay, thank you, Jen. We're finished with that, and we're now on to agenda item number eight, new business. The strategic plan 2017 to 2020 review with a requested action of discussion. Julie, would you like to begin the discussion?
Well, as you all have, the very long document there in front of you, if you're looking at your board packets, that does actually start on page 21 of the packet and goes for quite some time. It includes a small summary and then an individual action item by action item review of what actually occurred. And I just have to say that doing this review of the strategic plan really brought home how far DJPL has come as an organization in the past three and a half years. This strategic plan was approved in September of 2017. And we looked, from that point forward, we were looking at things like the long-term health of the facility and ensuring that we could take care of that without incurring debt. The team building and cross-departmental cooperation and collaboration has just grown exponentially in that time period. Our partnerships have grown in ways we never could have imagined. We have just taken the idea of partnering more to extend the reach of all of these organizations in Downers Grove and really made that part of our daily operations from People's Resource Center all the way through to, you know, the art department. We have all sorts of amazing partnerships. And we've given the staff really a lot of latitude to innovate and to do, try things and do things that we've never tried before. Our single action item of adding STEM kits to the kids' room collection actually grew into an entire library of things that is, that spans from bike locks to umbrellas, from sewing machines to metal detectors. We have all sorts of cool stuff that people can check out. And especially during this pandemic, some of those kits and some of those fun things have just really, it really gotten traction. So that has been wonderful to see. And I think one of the most important pieces is that our equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives for the library actually started right here in this strategic plan. And if you look at some of these action items, you can see those little seeds that eventually, that have grown into this focus for us as an organization on anti-racism and equity work. And to, it really started with those targeted services, particularly for seniors and teens and our homeless populations. And it has just grown to looking at those next areas of needs. And now we're doing diversity audits and working on an equity strategic plan that will help us really make sure that we are providing the best possible service to all groups in Downers Grove. And this is, this is so important to us as a public library, is to be welcoming to all and to have materials, programs, services for all folks. So we're all about building inclusivity moving forward. And if you have any questions for me, if there's anything that you don't understand or you want, want to talk about, I am just excited that we have done just so much in the last three and a half years.
Yes, we have. And Carissa, I think you were interested in making a comment.
Thanks, President Graber. Yeah, I, so I wasn't here as part of the board when the strategic plan was created. So, you know, and I've seen over the years that I have been here, how it's evolved and how we've seen, you know, report, periodic reports on it throughout, you know, our monthly meetings. And I really appreciate it all the time and effort that went into creating this. Because I've, having been on the receiving ends of requests for information about strategic plans, I know it's a lot of work to go and review and to kind of track progress on each and every one of these goals. So thank you so much, Julie, to you and Jen and the staff for compiling all of this and making it digestible for, for us. And for helping me kind of see also, as you said, Julie, the evolution of the library that's really happened over the last three years. And I really, I think the one thing that I would really like to understand a little bit more about, and I, and I, again, because I wasn't part of the planning process, I don't know kind of how this, how and whether this kind of aspect of strategic planning came up. But for, for certain, for certain strategic FOSI, or I guess the goals within those strategic focus elements, I'm thinking about kind of where, where the connection is between those actions and then the eventual impact. Because as you said, Julie, you're, you're doing so much, and I know the slippery slope of, you know, doing so much that you're continually doing so much and not, you know, seeing like where and how one of those things could have a greater impact than, than three other things. And so I'm wondering, you know, again, this isn't, you know, maybe even for this review process, for the, for the current strategic plan, but thinking about moving into the next phase of strategic planning, how can we understand the impact of some, especially some of the bigger initiatives that, that were undertaken the last three years? How, how can we understand the impact so that the next strategic plan? How, how can we understand the impact so that the next strategic plan takes advantage of all of that hard work? And, and also helps you and the staff not, you know, have this ballooning goals system where you're constantly dealing with things that you've already put in motion and not having a chance to really innovate and take stock and do, try new things?
Yes, and the, the process used with this one really kind of focused more on deliverables at the action item level rather than on how those deliverables fed into the goals. At the time we were making the plan, we had a lot of discussion around what do we do? What can we do that will, will help us achieve this? But it was, it was really focused on those action items. And I think that as we move into a new strategic planning process, that we're going to be more focused on impact and outcome rather than on specific action and deliverable.
That's terrific. And to your point earlier, Julie, I think focusing on that allows staff a little bit more leeway than to achieve those things in ways that they find relevant to the way they're engaging with patrons or, or, you know, kind of their experience and their, you know, professional development. So that's, that's terrific. Thank you for giving me that context.
Mr. Humphreys?
Yeah, I, I don't really have a question, but following along on what Carissa has, she is, she is said a good part of what I wanted to say because what I was just going to really, as, as a guy who's been on this board for a while, I think, I, I view this strategic plan as kind of a transition document because it had been, I have to choose my words carefully, but it had been quite a while before we had a real strategic plan. I think it was prior to my being on the board, but that may be an exaggeration. But there was a strong feeling that we needed to do that, and that's part of the, that part is part of what went into the hiring of our current director. And so, and the first thing that she did after she got here was a strategic plan. And there were a few bumps along the road with the board in some cases and with staff and so forth. But I think we learned what a strategic plan is and how it ought to function, and the next one is going to be amazing. I think is, is my view. But I think the earth has moved in a couple of directions, and Julie put the point of them out already. And that is our partnerships with the community. The library is truly looking outward into the community and inviting the community to be partners with us in the library. The schools, the senior centers, the businesses, the governments, all of this is, I mean, this is true not just of our library, but many libraries as we enter the 21st century, and libraries are, are changing a bit. But that and, and the EDI movement, which I think some of the point of that was, was brought about by some events that happened in the library and in the board. And I'm just really thrilled to see that coming to fruition now. So, so those are just comments, not really questions.
Any additional comments or questions on the strategic plan review? I, I had one just quick comment, or maybe this is a question, I guess. Julie, what, from your perspective, what, I mean, what are the next steps other than presenting it to the board, getting us, I think, maybe re-engaged with kind of where things stand on the strategic plan? What were kind of the next steps from your perspective?
All right, I, to just to back up for the edification of basically everybody, I think Jonathan and Dave may have been the only ones who were on this board when this strategic plan was actually passed. So that is a lot of, again, a lot of change in the last three and a half years. In, in the context of the board, I think it's also important to note that the former Board of Trustees was very, was adamant that we create this strategic plan in-house and not use a consultant. And so we, we did this, it was very much a team-building exercise. If you read through the, the strategic planning document, there's a whole timeline there. But we primarily used a, a cross-departmental staff committee that did key stakeholder interviews throughout the community. And so that was really the basis. We did not do any sort of surveying or we did some focus groups, but those were, were again facilitated in-house. And that, so it was, it was a little bit different kind of a process, but it was also a very, a very interesting process for the staff and very collaborative and team-building within the staff. The, the end strategic plan might not have been, you know, quite what it would have been had we had a, a strategic planning consultant who, you know, would have looked more at impact and outcomes and that sort of thing. But it really did, I think, get, get a lot of staff buy-in by having a lot of staff intimately involved in the planning process. So that, that was a really great part of the process itself that I didn't even mention there. And then as we're looking at next steps, as you know, our equity advisory team has started working on an equity strategic plan for the library. It is our intention that that equity strategic plan will kind of become the springboard for the larger strategic planning process. And so we're, we're kind of, we're holding off on that next strategic planning process so that we can really have a solid base using that equity strategic plan to inform all aspects of our next strategic plan. And so the equity advisory team is doing their good work. They have monthly meetings. And we will be reporting back to you. So far, there isn't a whole lot to report other than the fact that we have started. We started talking about goals at our meeting earlier in, in April and talking about what goals would look like for in, in equity strategic plan around, oh gosh, I'm blanking on the four, help me, interpersonal.
Interpersonal, now I'm forgetting. I knew the right before you acted disabled.
Structural.
Yeah.
Yeah. Individual, interpersonal, structural, and institutional.
Thank you, Jen, because I have written down order.
But those are all four.
Anyway, goals around all four of those. So, so just for internal to folks, to, and between folks on, on more of a one-on-one relational level in the library as an, an organization, as an institution, and then systemic, which is greater than the library, which would be more about the community and the world in which we operate. So looking at our goals in those four levels. And so I am very excited to see the work of the equity advisory team. And as you know, you will all begin your own part of this journey as a Board of Trustees on June 1st, when you have your first board workshop with Rashida Graham Washington to start developing your own common and shared language around equity and anti-racism, which is where each of our groups, our, our staff, our leadership team, and our equity advisory team all, all started. So I'm looking forward to beginning that work with you all.
Julie, Julie, do you think that we might be able to do that one? It's listed on my calendar as Zoom. Are we still thinking Zoom or are we, okay?
Yes, unfortunately, we do have, we, we are not yet in a position to be able to physically get everyone who is on this online meeting into a room. As we will discuss in the next agenda item, our large meeting room has become a shared staff workspace in order for us to be able to reopen the study rooms. And the next largest room in the library for this sort of thing is the kids' program room, which is currently about half full of furniture. So we can't get 10 people socially distanced into that room right now. It's one of the reasons that we're not doing in-person programming at the moment because we just don't have the space to do it yet. And, you know, much as this is a beautiful library with lots of great facilities, it was definitely not designed for social distancing, particularly in staff workroom areas. Who knew?
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any, before we jump to the COVID, the, the next agenda item, do we have any additional questions or comments regarding agenda item number eight, the strategic plan 2017 to 2020 review? Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number nine, the COVID-19 response and phased reopening plan. Julie, would you care to give us just a brief update as far as how the reopening plan is going?
Well, so we converted the meeting room into seven staff workstations socially distanced with basically some storage in the middle of the room and individual work tables for folks around the perimeter. So we are in, going to be reclaiming those study rooms. As of Monday, those will be available for public use. And beginning this week, we have started to slowly reintroduce non-reserved seating throughout the library. We, we even put back some of our soft seating because it is the vinyl, so it can be cleaned and table, some tables and chairs. We did see and, there was an uptick in our foot traffic on Monday, which was very interesting to see since that was kind of a soft opening. We had not announced to anyone that we would be doing that. So it, it's been good to see, we have been getting more visitors on a regular basis. They are, we do use kind of an honor system for our visit limit of two hours per day. But by and large, people are adhering to that. So that is good to see. And we are really looking forward to slowly reintroducing yet more seating. So when the study rooms come back online on Monday, we will, the need to reserve tables will take all those reservation signs off the table. So you'll only have to reserve a study room or a computer if you're, you care to do that. The tables and chairs will all be open seating. So over the summer, we are, for summer reading, we are going to restart some in-person programming, outdoor only. We've got some things set up. Thank, many, many thanks to our wonderful partners at the Downers Grove Park District for allowing us to use Fishel Park on a regular basis for outdoor summer programming. And so that will be kicking off along with summer reading at the end of May. So we're really looking forward to that. We are working on a plan to slowly introduce our, and get back to our full operating hours. So as of Monday, we will also be opening at 9:00 AM again. And then on the first Monday in June, we will extend to 8:00 PM. And on July 5th, it is our intention to extend back to 9:00 PM so that we are at our full operating hours. On the staff side, we are also getting staff, introducing those additional hours is also bringing more staff back into the building on a regular basis and, and cutting down on the amount of time that, that staff can work from home. So it, it's a good transition for all of us. We are making things work, finding ways to, to utilize space creatively. The, with the staff coming out of the study rooms, they still needed a space to attend online meetings. And so we were able to partially empty Conference Room B so that the far end is, is a, a staff space that they can book for attending online meetings. So we're making progress, slow but sure. We were very happy to have Jewel Osko do the vaccination event that was for not, it did not turn out to be for the library specifically, but for a group of organizations. And so that occurred last Friday. And so very, a lot of our staff have at least gotten their first vaccination. And we're seeing a real uptick in those who are now fully vaccinated. So that is also a huge milestone for us in this restoration of service process.
Hey, thank you. Do you have any questions or comments regarding the COVID-19 response, response and phased reopening plan? Okay, we, Mr. Humphreys?
I had a question. I was going to save it till later, but maybe it's appropriate right here, just talking about the vaccination issue. Are we to a point that if people want or need to be vaccinated, they can be? In other words, is the, are we finding places? It appears that there are a lot of openings.
Yes.
And, and I know that we are trying to make it easy for staff and giving them some time off and things like that to do that. So, but that's working, right?
Absolutely. And we've been sharing some vaccination events when we know that there's an event coming up that is nearby. We have been sending those along to all staff so that they can secure appointments. But yes, it has gotten a heck of a lot easier to find a vaccination appointment in the last couple of weeks.
Has there been, I have to ask it carefully, but any measurable vaccination resistance?
There, there will be, there will always be folks who choose not to.
Okay.
On the radio today, I heard that Fox Valley Mall, the city of Aurora, had a walk-in starting at 9:00 AM. I don't know if it was only for the day or if it's for the week, so just passing that on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to, I just lost my agenda, a motion to reauthorize the library director to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president within the parameters of the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing, reopening phasing plan as presented?
That moves.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item number nine, COVID-19 response and phased reopening plan as presented. That has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gudani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kutiya?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item number nine, the COVID-19 response and phased reopening plan as presented. We're now on to agenda item number 10, the library director's report. Julie?
We are moving right along. I did want to highlight a couple of things that we have happening. As you can see in Public Relations Manager Cindy Catrice's report, we are working toward a partnership with Casa DuPage that would allow us to offer restricted use cards to children in foster care in Downers Grove through their Casa representatives. This, in the cases of foster parents who might not want to take on the financial responsibility of signing for a library card for a foster child, this would would allow them to bring the the children to have use of the library. And so we really thought that this was a wonderful way to extend the reach of those restricted use cards and and allow library service for a group that may not be able to use the library otherwise. And in other news, as you, some of you may know, Ian Nor, our Building Operations Director, is on a medical leave currently. We are hoping to have him back with us in a couple of weeks. But our Building Operations Assistant, John Martin, has been doing a bang-up job, and today was definitely a challenge, but he rose to that challenge and did a great job. Our, several of our management team were also on hand to support and help out. Lizzie Makowski and Allison Renell were both troopers. Sandy Fain, one of our circulation supervisors, was actually acting as person in charge when when all of this occurred. So with with our water leak and the sky was literally falling in the in the nonfiction department, so the the staff just did such a great job, and it's because of their quick thinking and quick action that we had very little actual loss with this. So very pleased with everyone's performance there. Other than that, we are continuing our work on the land acknowledgement. The Aspen Discovery Platform, our beta catalog, as some of you may have tried out, the Swan Consortium did actually sign its three-year contract with Biwater Solutions that provides Aspen. And we, our pilot libraries, the six pilot libraries are all looking at implementing this as the primary catalog sooner rather than later. We do have a prioritized list of things that have to happen first. Most importantly is the system has to function seamlessly with our payment solution so that people can pay their fines and fees. So that that's one of the big things that that will be the hurdle to overcome before we can roll that out as our primary catalog. But very excited, Biwater has been making leaps and bounds progress every week toward addressing the things on that prioritized list. So all all good things, and we continue to move forward.
Excellent, thank you. Before we get to trustee comments and requests for information, do we have any questions for Julie about her report? Okay, thank you very much, Julie. We're now on to agenda item number 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments or requests for information? I have one, I think this is a question. As we receive submissions that, you know, public comment essentially on library business or other library business, is is there? I mean, what is the policy, I guess, on, and do the, do the submissions have to meet like some minimum threshold of kind of like legit, you know, legitimate sort of library business? Or like what, I mean, what, what, how does that work? Because I'm not really sure how things, I mean, I understand if someone shows up at the meeting and we have a discussion, I'm just not sure how it works if, like with respect to comments that are submitted online or like what needs, like what what comments would you get that would need to be, you know, read to the board and what comments wouldn't be kind of how that process works?
To be read to the board, and if you look at the agenda, it's the third paragraph that offers the, in lieu of providing public comment by online participation or by phone during the meeting, members of the public may send comments to the library director at dglibrary.org/feedback. Please indicate that this is a board meeting comment in the body of the comment. Beware that comments sent to the library will be read individually. And in our public comments policy, it states that we ask folks to state their name, that's generally for our minutes, when they are making a comment. So the feedback form, they put their name on, so Jen read out the name of the person and then read the comment verbatim. People can also leave feedback for the library via our How Do We Do forms and via our feedback form on the website. However, unless they indicate that it is a board meeting comment, it is not read out in this forum. If someone writes to the Public Relations, any of our our emails and indicates Board of Trustees, those are generally forwarded, those are forwarded to you all. There is also thatlibraryboard@dglibrary.org email that people can email to directly that goes to all of you. So those are the the primary means to speak directly to you. Then there are also people just make general comments, and for those, it is Jen or I or the Public Relations Department that respond. It depends on the the comment, what they're asking about, what they're, yeah, what they want to know.
Mr. Humphreys?
You have mute.
In general, it's been our practice over the years that we let, we let people come and talk about almost anything for for five minutes, as long as it's not defamatory or inflammatory or 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 libellious or something like that. But we do have a time limit. We do ask them to state their name and address because if we're going to take time from our meeting, we we want, I mean, people from our constituency, in other words, they live here. Additionally, we've had a practice of that section of the agenda is not intended to be a, an interactive section, a question and answer period. It's a, it's a chance for the public to make comments to the board, and if the comment takes the play, takes the form of a question, it's been our practice normally to then ask the 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 staff, and which means the director usually, to respond. And if the board has stuff they want to respond on, we funnel it through the director rather than having the meetings themselves become a question and answer session. So that's, that's kind of been the practice. Usually, it's a matter of our listening, and we 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 invite people to speak because we want people to take an interest in the library. And it's, it's a democracy. We listen and we thank them for that, and if it requires a response, then it goes through the channels.
Right, yeah, I wasn't asking about the process of showing up to a meeting and making a comment. I was asking about the submission process and kind of what needs to be read and or not read. And so I really, I mean, I agree with you, Dave. I mean, I was, I was really more focused on the written statements. But thank you, Julie, and, you know, for answering that question. Does anyone have any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
I'll add one comment. Jen and I had talked about Republic Bank doing a third display. They've done one for Local Heroes and for the anniversary of Woodstock, and this one would be for the 20th anniversary for September 11th. It would be towers with non-graphic pictures and articles, and then patrons can write what they were doing at that moment, you know, and their thoughts in the 20 years. And so I think that that will be a really nice display again for the library.
And again, another great partner for us, Republic Bank, and their traveling exhibits have been just absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, trustee Stapleton. Do we have any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
I, again, maybe need to choose my words carefully, but I, it just in very general terms, I just want to applaud applaud the the Board of Trustees and the library staff for exercising our responsibility to serve the entire community of Downers Grove and to occasionally audit ourselves to be sure that we're serving all of the citizens of Downers Grove. Period.
Thank you, trustee Humphreys. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, we are now on to agenda item number 12, which is the adjournment, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you next month.